Good morning and welcome to the March 17th, 2020 City Council Meeting. Please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Here.
Soldner?
Here.
Bagwell?
Here.
Garza?
Here.
Iris DeCarvallo?
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This morning Darrell Peterson will be giving our prayer. Thank you Darrell.
Thank you. How many of you think we need to pray, huh? Let's pray. Dear Heavenly and Most Gracious Father, we come before you and we thank you Father God that you're a good God. We thank you Father that you have the ability to do whatever we allow you to do. And I thank you Father God, you're not a God of diseases, God of sickness, God of death. The Father God, you're a God of life. And I thank you Lord God, you've given unto us everything that pertains to life and godliness and goodness in Christ Jesus. And I thank you Lord God, you've not given us a spirit of fear but of love, power, and a sound mind. And Fathers, many people are operating in fear, they're operating in the negative, but Father, we just stand on your word, we stand on your promises. And Fathers, we pray today that we thank you Lord God that this disease shall be gone. It shall leave in Jesus' name for those that take authority over. And I thank you Father for life, health, happiness, and the joy of serving you, and Father, the joy of living in this community. Thank you for the believers, thank you Father God for the people that will stand up for what's right. And Father, today we stand up for what's right, that you have not given us any disease, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Next item please.
Item four, proclamations.
In light of recommendations for social distancing, we thought it would be prudent to avoid having people accept proclamations today, so I would be happy to read those, but no one will be accepting those. Do I need to come to them?
You know, I...
Okay. Will you... Should I... Let's just move on? Yep. Okay.
Item five, oral communications from the audience.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? If you'd like to, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and please limit your remarks to five minutes. Anyone? Hearing none, please call the next item.
Item six, consent agenda.
I will move to approve a consent agenda as printed.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Iris DeCarvallo?
Yes, next item please.
Item seven A, public hearing to consider evaluating the performance of CDBG grant number 18 CR001 for the rehab of the blighted Stevens Building.
Good morning, Council. Jim Saitnader, Coordinator for Downtown and Housing. Excited to be here this morning and very thankful for this project and the difference it's made.
Jim, do you mind if we have a motion to open the public hearing? I'm sorry.
Open the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Iris DeCarvallo?
Yes, go ahead Jim, sorry about that.
Thanks. The reason for the public hearing is to evaluate the performance of the CDBG grant that we received from the state of Kansas for commercial rehab of a downtown building. It was one of the first grants of this kind and very exciting because it was... It took a combination of a blighted building, which I think we all agree the Stevens was, and then it needed a business that was going to go in and utilize that space. The grant wasn't designed for a what-if or maybe it had to have a willing partner. And I thank Scott and Jen Cooley so much because they definitely have done that. And this is the second building that they've made downtown better with, so they're real personal heroes of mine. The grant was for $250,000 and the grant does come to the city of Hutchinson. And our finance department did a wonderful job in working with SCED to run through the red tape and the reports and the things necessary to make for a successful grant. Also would like to thank Gloria McDowell from SCED. She was instrumental in holding this all together. She was the administrator, project manager for us, and just did a wonderful job. And so with that, I'd like to invite Gloria to come up. She's put... SCED's put together a great PowerPoint and it really shows what's been done and how the grant worked.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And as he said, my name is Gloria McDowell. I'm with SCED, South Central Kansas Economic Development District. And I put together a small slideshow to show the building, before and after pictures. And this is the, obviously, one big picture that's up on the screen now of the building. The top one was before and the second one's below is the after. But you'll see in some of the other pictures how much of a difference it made. And this one is the vision of Scott and Jen Cooley. Scott and Jen Cooley bought the building with a vision to convert most of the main floor into a salon spa boutique since their existing salon spa was growing the existing building. They needed more room to expand. So they teamed up with the city of Hutchinson to apply for a CDBG commercial rehab grant through Kansas Department of Commerce. And with the assistance of SCED, was successful and was awarded a $250,000 grant. The grant consisted of exterior masonry repair, storefront repair, window glass repair replacement, furnace havoc, electrical plumbing, and other code corrections. So the grant was designed around to make the building all code-oriented things, majors such as I just listed there that they did do. And then the next picture is... I think this is a really good picture because it really shows the before and after of the back of that building because you can see it was crumbling pretty bad. The masonry... Or the facade on that building and all the new windows afterwards in the backside of it. And this is the front of the building and obviously, to your right there is the new side. And I know they may be in the future plans to address the other side with another grant. And this is the inside of the building, the front doors, before and after. And this is a before picture of the inside of the building. The top one is before and the bottom one is after, which is a huge difference. And the salon was able to expand their staff to 20. This includes hairstyles, nail technicians, and massage therapists. They were able to expand the boutique area and add a dressing room with new spaces. So the whole point, what Jen and Scott needed was a larger area to expand their business, which they have achieved. And this is kind of a collage of pictures of all the pictures of the inside of the... It's a beautiful facility now, as you can see. And then this is just a picture of the outside, a closer view of the outside of the front of the building here. I don't think that's it. So the point being is that they achieved everything they wanted with the grant to expand their business and, you know, and the building is hugely improved. And hopefully down the road, they can even work on more of the building. So Jen and Scott, did you want to add?
Yeah, you want to come up and tell us a little bit? I know that this process was not without challenges and a lot of personal sacrifice. And it's really, really incredible, guys, just incredible, the sweat equity and investment you've made.
Scott Cooley, obviously, 225 South Main.
Jen Cooley, also 225 South Main.
So old buildings, obviously, have had a kind of a special place in our heart. This being the second one that we've done and the other one at 24 South Main. So this project, we initially actually looked at doing in 2009 when we were starting Evolution. And Jen just fell in love with the building, just could never quite let it go. And at the time, it was way too much building, way too much size. And we weren't sure exactly, starting out a new business, if it was going to be too much for us to bite off. We didn't know how much staff we were going to have, so we thought we'd start a little smaller and scale and try and be successful and grow. Obviously, she can tell you kind of the... A little more of the backstory of the salon and spa and her history. But yeah, it's been a great project. Really got to praise a lot of the city staff for working with us. I know sometimes there's a bad rap that goes with, you know, code and some of the red tape and administration. But it really was a lot... It was a lot easier this time versus when we did our other building in 2010. A lot of things have changed. It's been easier to do business. The communication's been easier. So yeah, especially the internal staff that worked through the grant process, Karen Welpner here, as well as Jim, obviously. I've done a great job and we really appreciate all their help and assistance. Without them, I don't know that I could have went through all the numbers and reporting requirements to the state that they required. So it's great to bring the oldest building in Hutch back online and back to speed. Obviously, we've got a lot of work left, as you can see. The front facade still has a lot of broken windows and a lot of pigeons, things like that, but we're getting there. So this was done in seven months, so it's pretty quick turnaround time. We bought it in 2018 and it took about a year to get the grant and the paperwork through. But actual construction time from start to finish was right at seven months, so...
Great.
Then for you?
I'm good.
She'll tell you, I'm the talker. But yeah, appreciate all the cooperation from the city of town.
Well, really appreciate your feedback on how it was to work with staff and encouraging to hear that it's... You've seen some improvement, so thank you so much.
All right.
Are there comments or... Thank you again.
Wonderful, thank you.
The exciting thing to me too is look at all of that vast amount of space that has new uses waiting. And hopefully, we can assist Scott and Jen in making those kinds of things happen in the next few years. So I would ask that after we close the public hearing, that you would entertain the motion to approve the notice of completion, final inspection, and final wage compliance report for CDBG grant number 18 CR001 and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary papers.
Are there further comments or questions of staff?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion from the audience? This is a public hearing. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Iris DeCarvallo?
Yes, is there a motion on the...
I would move to approve notice of completion, final inspection, and final wage compliance report format and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Iris DeCarvallo?
Yes, next item please.
Thank you.
Item seven B, public hearing to consider application for certificate of public convenience and necessity by Richard Burgess.
Move to open the public hearing.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Iris DeCarvallo?
Yes.
Good morning, Council, Mayor, Karen Welpner, City Clerk. An application for certificate of public convenience and necessity was filed on February 24th for the operation of a taxi cab in the city of Hutchinson by Richard Burgess to operate under the name of Hutch Rides. The governing body set the required public hearing on March 3rd for today. Notice of this hearing was mailed to all persons on record that currently hold the certificates of public convenience and necessity. Hutchinson City Code, Section 16106, addresses the issuance of the certificate of public convenience and necessity. This code essentially requires the governing body to determine if additional taxi cab services are needed. And if so, is the applicant fit, willing, and able to perform such public transportation as well as able to follow the rules designated by the Chief of Police. The governing body shall then direct the city clerk to issue a certificate stating the name, the address, and the number of vehicles authorized, and the date of issuance. Otherwise, the application shall be denied. In making the determination of the approval, the governing body shall take into consideration the number of taxi cabs currently in operation, whether existing transportation is adequate to meet the public need, the probable effect to increased service on local traffic conditions, and the character, experience, and responsibility of the applicant. If the application is denied, the applicant shall not be eligible to file a new application for six months. So there are currently three public convenience and necessity certificates issued. Hutch Taxi received theirs January 1st, 1994. They became under new ownership June 15th of 2015. Roadrunner received their certificate August 19th, 2008. And Helping Hands Shuttle received theirs on March 17th, 2015. If you have any other questions, I'm happy to try to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions about issuing an additional certificate?
Well, I'm certainly a free enterprise person and certainly support the right and the ability of anyone to enter into a business operation. But I continue to have to ask that question in terms of how much or how many taxi services can the city of Hutchinson support without jeopardizing the other three that are already approved and in operation? I guess that's my question. And I certainly support free enterprise, but I'm troubled by the fact that we do have three companies and maybe we have some background as to their service in the city.
I believe that Hutch Taxi is here. Maybe she could help answer that? I did not see Roadrunner, Mr. Hill, or Marcia Judd with Helping Hands.
I would just add that, I mean, that's a legitimate question and I agree pretty much with what you said. You know, in reality, and we'll hear from taxi people, but I would think that we've got probably more than we can support even now without it and afford it, but that's just my opinion. Yeah. Yeah, come on up.
Can you come up to the podium, please?
Yes, my name is Jeanette Chambers. I'm with Hutch Taxi. And I have three cars running out there daily and night, 24/7. It keeps growing and I don't mind another taxi coming to town. But the gentleman that's trying to apply, I let him go from working for me. And I... He's supposed to wait two... Up to two years before even apply for a taxi company. Plus, I don't approve using the name Hutch Ride. It needs to be changed differently, far from Hutch Taxi, because my customers are confused. I had a client ask me if I raised my rate... Rates, and I said, "No, ma'am, we did not." And she said, "Well, driver charged me more than what you usually charge me." And I asked who it was and they... They mentioned a certain fellow that was in this room. And I said, "Well, he don't work for me no more." And I had to explain to her that we're Hutch Taxi, not Hutch Ride, and it's confusing the people of the city, the name. So it needs to be different. Any other... I mean, you got any other questions?
What kind of contract? Did he have an employment contract with you?
He was... He was working for me.
I mean, for the two-year limit, did you have...
No, because I don't know where to get that information, but I know it's in...
But I didn't know if it was actually officially signed.
I have a master's degree in business and I learned it in college, but I don't know where to pick... Pull it up, how to get that information, so I can have my drivers to sign it.
So you didn't have a non-compete in place?
Yeah. So unfortunately, I don't think we could weigh that in on the decision factor.
Well, they don't need to be going around cutting down Hutch Taxi either.
Yeah. Oh, no, I understand that as well. I just wanted to know if there was a formal...
Yeah. Now, if anybody knows how I can get a copy so I can pass it around to my drivers, I appreciate that.
Are there other questions from the council? If not, we can hear from the applicant. Thank you, Jeanette. Please come on up, state your name and address.
Yeah, my name's Richard Burgess, 3804 West 9th. As far as what she's saying, we never discussed anything like that. And second, we haven't even took any rides from anyone yet. And topping all off, ours is going to be cheaper than what she's talking about overcharging. I'm just trying to get this business up and going. There's nothing wrong with free enterprise and free competition. I mean, I'm trying to make a living just like everybody else. It's as simple as that. We went through all the proper steps, done everything we were supposed to do. It was asked of us. Now, I'm just wanting to get in business and get things started. And I don't know what her deal is, that's fine, but I'm just ready to offer the community this opportunity. That's all I have to say.
And I know that you've made the... John, Darrell, you made the comment that you didn't think the city could afford it. But I think as far as I'm free enterprise, and if we do have another one, wouldn't that just be good competition, which would drive me with the performance of other ones up? I know that I've ridden in some of the taxis and sometimes the performance is not always up to par. And if you add that a little bit extra of competition, would... It would drive up... Sometimes it drives up the performance because it pushes the others to want to perform better, outperform the other person.
Yeah, and I really, I probably... That was just my thought. I'm more in line with you all about free enterprise and it is what it is. Competition's probably healthy. Just been around that taxi operation for many, many years and the ups and downs of some of the companies, so please understand that. So I don't want to disregard the gentleman's...
I got a question.
Okay.
What do you feel about what her saying about having your name is similar to hers? That's what I take it as.
It's somewhat similar, but it's not the same. I mean, if it's that big a deal and people have a problem with it, I could change the name, you know? But I don't see the problem myself.
Okay.
One thing I do want to remind people as well is that we do have an Uber to... Here in town, an Uber driver. So we can continue down this path. This is a very heavily regulated industry, which it should be, I understand, you're carrying it around other people. But there's been a market disruption in this industry anyway that we have no control over, or very limited control. So I see nothing wrong with the addition of another company because anybody can sign up to be an Uber driver or Lyft driver. Just wanted to throw that out there.
At least there's some control here that there wouldn't be otherwise.
For sure.
Yeah.
It's unfortunate that there's some bad blood, but sometimes that happens during competition. Are there other comments?
I have another question, Mayor. From a regulatory standpoint, if these licenses are approved, is it for a particular duration and they're reviewed or extended?
No.
There's not. Okay.
So this is ad infinitum. You don't have to reapply.
Annual.
Because I thought that you're...
The certificate is issued one time, but there is an annual report.
So what will happen if you approve is the next step, he will provide me with his liability insurance that is required. The vehicle will be inspected by the police department and those things happen before I issue the certificate of necessity.
And is that done regularly?
In our code, it does not say it's done regularly, but we do have a report that we do mail out and ask them to fill it out and send it back to us and ask them to have the cars inspected. But it's not in our code that they have to do it.
Great.
What's the... Is there anything that will pull their certificate? Do we have rules and regulations of anything that would pull their certificate?
I didn't bring the entire code with me, but I do think that, yes, that they would have to do something that they're not supposed to do and then it would come back to City Council and the governing body has the authority.
Okay, so if he would... Yeah, if he were arrested for a malfeasance, say, drunk driving or something like that, it would... Okay.
Yeah.
Not that he would be...
I believe that's...
Just hypothetical.
And all the drivers are...
The drivers are licensed for two years at a time. Currently, we have 24 that are licensed. I never know whether they are still employed with the taxi companies or not, but there are 24 licensed drivers out there right now.
Okay, that's interesting.
And usually, the policing's among the taxi companies that tell us what's happening, so that's how some of that happens.
That happens. Okay. Further questions or a motion to... Or any other comments from the audience? This is a public hearing. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Iris DeCarvallo?
Yes. Is there a motion on the issuance of the certificate?
We have to have a motion on that, too.
Yeah.
Well, I motion that we give the certificate, or I have to read that whole thing.
I'll second.
That's fine.
Okay.
Please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Iris DeCarvallo?
Yes, next item please. Thank you, Karen.
Item eight A, consider ordinances authorizing bonded projects.
Angela Richard, Director of Finance. I have today two ordinances for bonded projects. The city will incur certain expenses before we close on the bond. The city will incur certain expenses before we close on the bonds that we intend to issue for these projects. The Internal Revenue Service, the IRS, regulations require that we adopt ordinances to allow these expenses prior to reimbursing ourselves with bond proceeds. And so I have two ordinances today. The first one is for Main Street. Back in 2019, we already adopted a ordinance allowing us to reimburse ourselves for these expenses. But in reviewing that, our legal counsel found that we did not include the capitalized interest that we intended to. So to maintain our mill levy in 2020, we decided to defer our first payment until 2021. And doing this, we have capitalized interest costs that we did not include in that. So we're asking the first ordinance to be approved to increase that, the total allowable cost for that project for that reason. The second ordinance is to allow the projects listed. Four of them are projects that you approved to the last council meeting. Those are the Kerry Park Road by the fishing pond, McQueen Field parking lot, Sherman and Walnut parking lot, and the First and Washington parking lot. Also included is Stremel Field, which was bid in a prior project with engineering. So the total costs for that are anticipated to be $617,000. We have the fire logistics building. We are splitting these costs with the HCC. Our part of that is to build the building itself, and then they'll furnish the insides. That, we're asking for $116,000. And then Southwest Bricktown Park. According to the 2020 budget, we're going to bond $50,000, and then $50,000 will be provided from park reserves that they have on hand. We want to round this up to a total amount of $825,000 to cover any other additional bonding costs that we may incur. With that, are there any questions?
Angela, have you conferred with bond counsel because of the volatility of the bond market as to when you get into the sale of the bonds in terms of what the likely interest rate might be?
I have not. I've heard that it is changing very rapidly. I know the beginning of last week, it was down, then it started to go back up a little bit. But I haven't asked him what he thinks it'll be at that point. I'm not sure if he knows.
Are these 15- or 20-year bonds or 30-year bonds?
I believe we're planning on issuing 20-year bonds.
20-year bonds?
Yes.
I don't want to catch you off guard here, but sometimes we periodically like to look at where we are as a city in terms of our total inventory of bonds, of what, what is, what goes off this year and what would come on. You happen to have some feel for that?
And that's why we staggered the payment of these until 2021. That'll keep our payment, payments level and consistent if we do that.
All right, and that's the important part, that it would not impact appreciably our, our mill levy, like the bond, bond and interest.
Our, our bond counsel is aware of our desire to keep the mill levy pretty consistent. So they've projected that out for us, and, and they're aware of that desire, and we're monitoring that so we don't bond too much and have our mill levy spike.
Right, very good. Thank you for that. Yes.
Was there additional costs? Like, so when you weren't able to get it into the budget and you postponed that payment, what was the additional cost of having to postpone the payment?
I have that. The total for all these projects is $33,000. That we are bonding, or including into the bonding costs for interest that we really should have paid in October of this year, but we're deferring that till '21. And when I say that, I, I do want to make sure that we're also including the $600,000 for the-
Do we have any scheduled bonds that are going to be paid off, or do we have any contingency plan on paying off some of the earlier bonds in the early to get? Or what, what, do you have any information on early payment on some of the bonds? That way we're not-
Do you mean to, like, refund in advance pay, or just what would, we would normally pay?
Um, no, I'm asking, do we have any idea of our ability to maybe pay off some bonds sooner than issued? And are any of those dropping off in the near future?
I haven't looked at our ability to pay them off sooner than issued. Our bond counsel is usually looking at whether we can refinance and get better interest rates, and we did that last year.
Yeah.
And so, um-
I would just say we're always on the alert, working with bond counsel when the opportune time to refund. We just did one, what, last year?
Yes.
And saved a significant amount of money.
I remember that, and I applaud you for that. I just didn't know if we, we've got a lot of projects going on, we've got a lot of work that needs to be done, and just having the ability to do that without raising any taxes. And so I was wondering if we had any, if there was any bonds that we could pay off early to, or our ability, like, because if we're postponing payments because of the mill levy, then, you know, how, what is our ability to pay bonds on time, and if not, and have the ability to pay some off early to open up some more bonding opportunity, is what I'm asking.
I, I think we're also limited by the ability to pay them off early by some IRS regulations that are out there, because some of ours aren't callable, which means we can't pay them off early. So our bond counsel also looks at that.
Yeah.
And we typically go through that with the council. Some of you will remember during the budget each year, we talk about the bond and interest. What we've got in our budget document, it shows all of our outstanding debt, what we've got coming off the books, what we're going to add. And we always talk about that, you know, keeping that mill levy the same, and also just the refunding opportunities. And I wouldn't doubt that, you know, in the next few months, we might have another opportunity to refund. But, but typically, when we refund, there's a kind of a magical number that we, we need to gain 3%. And if it's less than that, it's not worth it because of the bond issuance cost, and so, you know, just to refund, you know, maybe save a percent and a half probably isn't, isn't, you know, financially feasible to do. But, but I've been very impressed with our bond counsel over the years since I've been here, that really, I mean, they're, of course, they're in it obviously to make money. When they refund, they make money, and so they're always identifying bond issues for cities that are candidates for refunding, and we'll continue to monitor that, and there'll be more conversation on that as you get into budget process as well.
All right. I just know we've been bonding a lot lately.
Very good questions, though.
So make sure we're sticking with the same course. Thank you.
And this particular ordinance will require two different motions, correct?
Right. One for the Main Street ordinance amending the 2019 ordinance, and then a separate one for the other ordinance authorizing the rest of the projects.
Actually, there's three ordinances.
And then after this, I'll ask for the approval of the resolution so we can start the bonding process. So if we can approve the ordinances, and then I'll go over the resolution if that works for you guys.
That would be great.
Okay.
Is there a motion on the first ordinance?
Well, I would move to approve ordinance amending ordinance number 2019-24 of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, authorizing the construction of certain improvements, and authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds to pay the cost thereof, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second. Please call the roll. You're the seconder today.
Yeah.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Iris DeCarvallo?
Yes. And is there a motion on the second ordinance?
I will move to approve the ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds in the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, to pay the cost of certain improvements, all pursuant to charter ordinance number 50 of the city, and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second that.
Please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Iris DeCarvallo?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item 8B, consider resolution authorizing the public sale of taxable general obligation bonds.
So again, Angela Richard, Director of Finance. So now I ask that you approve the resolution authorizing the sale of $3.805 million of, these should be not taxable, general obligation bonds. What this allows us to do is place the bid out and accept the bids. The intent is to have the bond sale on April 20th. It's a Monday, and then April 21st, we would come to you with the results, and you would formally approve that bond sale. So this authorizes us to start the process. Bond counsel and legal counsel have reviewed all the documents, and we request that you approve.
You don't take the motion?
A motion to approve resolution authorizing the public sale of approximately $3.805 million, a principal amount of general obligation bond, series 2020-A of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second. Please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Iris DeCarvallo?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item 8C, consider ordinance amending chapter nine of the Hutchinson City Code.
Good morning, Mayor, and members of the council. For the record, my name's Ryan Vila, Director of Planning and Development with the City of Hutchinson. And pull up my series of presentations here. Okay, so several items before you this morning, but the first one is a proposed subdivision ordinance amendment for minor plats, lot splits, and lot lines adjustments, specifically Sections 9-401D and Article 5 of Chapter 9 of the City Code. So kind of an overview on this. This is something that I've been working on really since I've gotten here. One of the things that I've heard from many people is that it would be nice if we had a little bit of an easier way to approve more simple plats, that don't have to go to Planning Commission, then go to City Council. That takes about six to eight weeks to go through that process. So looking at other cities in the state and kind of some of the experience I've had in other communities of some things that we could do. So kind of brought this idea of more of an administrative review for certain minor subdivision actions. So there was a public hearing that was held on this item back in September of 2019. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this with a vote of six to zero. We did work with our partners at Reno County, as they are the ones who would need to record anything that is approved here. They did have some concerns regarding the recording of documents. We worked with their staff over the course of several months of trying to address those issues. And we believe we've gotten to a point of where those issues have all been addressed. And really, this is part of my ongoing effort, really, to kind of look at our development processes and kind of streamline those processes where we can. So currently, the only mechanism that we have to expedite a subdivision process is through a concurrent submittal of preliminary and final plats. There's only certain plats that really can be done with that. But that still does require having to go to Planning Commission and then City Council, and as I said, that's a six to eight week process. So this proposed ordinance would permit administrative review and approval of minor plats, lot splits, and lot lines adjustments. As I mentioned, I looked at several cities across the state, and there are several cities, including Olathe, Gardner, Topeka, and Lawrence, that have similar type of ordinances on the books, so was able to kind of work with them and then look at state law to make sure we were meeting everything. There's a lot with this, so I'll kind of go through the, kind of the first standard conditions that would be required for anyone to be able to even do this. So we would, so for a subdivision to even be able to go through this process, there would be several things that have to be done. There could be no new public infrastructure that's created. All lots and structures would have to meet the lot and building requirements. There would have to be already access or frontage to a public street, so no landlocked parcels could be created. It would not result in a significant increase or interfere with existing service levels, with traffic, utilities, anything like that. Any easements that are on the property would not require modification. It can't be located within a flood hazard area. It would have to be consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. It would have to conform with the state minimum standards for boundary surveys. They would have to be current on all real estate taxes and special assessments. And the lot cannot be previously divided through an administrative process, so somebody can't use this continually to kind of circumvent the subdivision process. So the two, or I'm sorry, the three different actions that we'd be looking at, the first one's a minor plat. This would be that there'd be no more than five lots from a previously platted parcel. You could use it for the removal of existing platted setback lines. That's a big issue we've had. We have a lot of, of plats in the city that were platted in the 1930s, 1940s that have, they meet the zoning setbacks, but we've had to have people go through variance processes and things like that to get relief from a platted setback that doesn't, you know, doesn't meet our current standards. And then you could also use it to consolidate previously platted lots into no more than two lots. So that first one, I kind of want to talk a little bit about. This would be if you had a large piece of property, and somebody wanted to come in and split it into no more than five different lots. It's on an existing street, it has utilities all along it, so they're not having to build additional infrastructure or anything like that. That's what that no more than five lots from a previously platted parcel. So the requirements for somebody to be able to go through this would be that there'd be no more than five lots. Once again, have to conform to the state standards for boundary surveys. Consistent with any conditions previously imposed on a previously platted part of that subdivision. It'd have to meet all minimum lot size, building height, and setback requirements, has to meet all your stormwater management requirements. You can't basically mess with the easements. You can't vacate them, add them, relocate, or remove them. Water and sewer services would not be adequately impacted. That, once again, no public infrastructure would need to be added to serve the lots, and real estate taxes would, would not be delinquent. So that's the, the minor plat. So kind of what is the approval process for this? So they would submit an application with us. We would require scaled drawings by a licensed land surveyor certificate that all the special taxes and assessments have been paid. The approval process, they would submit it to the Planning and Development Department. We would go through, the DRC would actually be the review body for it. So engineering would look at it, fire would look at it, Public Works would look at it, planning would look at it, building would look at it. All those members would look at it, provide any comments. If they didn't have any major comments, then the Director of Planning and Development would approve the plat and would sign it. The plat would then be placed on the next City Council consent agenda for the mayor to approve and sign. And that is because state law does say you can't have a plat without it being approved by the governing body. So instead of going to Planning Commission, it would still have to come to City Council, but that would be more on consent agenda. And then if there was ever any questions, and obviously a member of the council would be able to remove it from the consent agenda to bring it for additional discussion. And then the city would just record the plat with the register of deeds. So the second part, this is a lot split. So right now, we kind of have lot splits, and basically we have a process, but it, it's not really regulated. People, sometimes we'll come to the city, sometimes they won't come to the city, they'll go to the county and just get split. And when we pull up it, we'll be like, "Oh, we didn't even realize that this had been split." So hopefully, this will kind of formalize that process. So a lot split is a division of a property in no, into no more than two tracks. Requirements of the, the lot split, once again, that they are exempt, that they're platted or exempt from plating under state law. They have to meet the lot and building standards, so you can't create a non-conforming lot through a lot split. Once again, your easements aren't modified, your water and sewers not adversely impacted. Any septic or well on the site would have to meet your setback and area requirements, and your property's not from previous to a previous lot split. Once again, application forms, we would require drawing from a licensed land surveyor, so that's been a big issue. We've had people who just kind of sketch things out. And really, we need to get it from a land surveyor so that we can pin where the property lines are and actually have a good legal description. And then, as I mentioned, legal descriptions for the new lots. This is a little bit of a quicker process. This would just go through the DRC, the Director of Planning and Development would approve it, and then we would record it, so it doesn't go to City Council. Your final one would be your lot line adjustment. This would be where you have already two lots, and let's say we have this a lot of times where a neighbor may say, "Hey, I want to deed off, you know, give, sell a small portion of my property to somebody else, to my neighbor." And so basically, it's just adjusting that lot line. Both those parties sign it, and, and you go through with that. Once again, those, those properties have to be platted. Each adjusted lot meets your required lot size and setback requirements, your utility easements aren't touched. No additional lots are created, no easements are added, relocated, or removed. Once again, this is required a drawing from a land surveyor, legal description, and has a similar approval process. So kind of a lot here, but really, the intent is really to kind of, some of these really minor things that right now would require going through Planning Commission and, and sometimes City Council to really try to kind of clean those up as much as possible. So we've worked with the county on that to, to answer- So we've worked with the county on that to answer some of their concerns and we've worked with the city attorney as well and we think this is a good compromise and hopefully will speed up that process for some people. So the motion before you, we're recommending approval of this. So happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Well, Ryan, I really applaud you for trying to do anything you can to streamline the development process or any kind of, you know, customer facing things that they would need to go to the commissions for. Can you give an example of a few, have there been projects in the past few years that would have had to go through a more rigorous approval process that, who could have maybe taken advantage of this?
Probably the biggest one is the existing setbacks. That's a, that's a big issue that we run into. And then the other issue would be your lot line adjustments. You see that more with industrial properties where maybe it's an existing property and someone wants to build a building and they need to move a line and they don't have it as, you know, and if they own all the property around them, it makes even less sense for them to have to go back through a whole subdivision process, move the lines and do all of that. So we've had a couple of conversations with some people in some of the industrial areas that have wanted to do that and are kind of waiting to see what happens with this.
Oh, great. Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, I have a couple of questions, Ryan. Does, do these proposed amendments have any bearing on the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction?
They do.
Given any thought to that?
They, they do not at this point, yeah.
They would not impact?
Not at this point. So we don't, we have an area of influence, but we don't have an area of, we don't, we don't do the split.
We don't have that right now.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have the joint committee anymore. That's something that I will be working with the new city manager and the new county administrator to restart those conversations, to see if there is any interest from the county to kind of allow us to have some extraterritorial jurisdiction. But yeah, we don't have anything at that point on the books.
We don't have anything at this point, okay, right. By chance, have you conferred with developers, residential developers that typically would propose a new subdivision in terms of their comfort level with what you're proposing?
It probably isn't really going to affect most of them because most of our residential developers, it would be more than five lots. They would have to put streets in, they'd have to put utilities in that. And so they would at that point go through the regular subdivision process. The only way this could work is some of our smaller developers, maybe it's a farmstead that's been sold to a small developer. The frontage is going to come, the access is going to come off the existing street that maybe the property fronts on. There's already utilities that run in front of it. It may speed up that process for somebody like that, but that's going to be really the only opportunity where someone would do that.
Okay, thank you.
In reality, there aren't that many spaces left in town for this type of thing.
There really aren't. And so that's why it was one of these things is like, eh, you know, okay, you've got to, you've got to hire, you know, somebody, you've got to wait six to eight weeks and do all of that.
Yeah, so this is just really a cleanup process.
Absolutely.
Are there further questions of staff? Any other comment? Is there a motion on this item? John?
Okay, I will move to approve the ordinance amending section nine dash four, oh, one, D and article five, lot splits of chapter nine of the code of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second, please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Iris DeCarvallo?
Yes, next item please.
Item 8D, consider ordinance amending chapter 27 of the Hutchinson City Code.
Once again, Ryan Veelook, Director of Planning and Development with the City of Hutchinson. This item before you is a zoning ordinance amendment for freestanding sign submittals and roof, and amending the roof sign definition. So this is sections 27, eight, oh, two and 27, eight, thirteen, D of the city code. So kind of a quick overview here. So currently, section 27, eight, thirteen, D, which is our submittal requirements for signage, states basically just that all signs shall meet the building code. Doesn't have much more than that. So the building code does not provide a clear standard on when engineering drawings are required for freestanding signs. We've had an issue where we've had people that have come in and wanted to put in rather large signs and they just sort of sketch, well, we're going to put a footing in, but there's really no, no math, no science behind how large the footing's going to be. So there's not much thought that goes through that. So really, currently, this has been based on the building official discretion. So we've had, we had an issue late last year, and the council's aware of this, that somebody wanted to put in a sign and as I mentioned, they had just sort of, we weren't really sure where their numbers were coming from. And so the building official asked for them to provide either engineer drawings or they needed to modify their sign. So they ended up modifying their sign, but it really showed that we had a hole in our ordinance. So once again, one of my kind of, you know, bedrock in terms of looking at ordinances is wanting to create a clear and reasonable requirements that really removes any unpredictability. So if our building official, you know, we get a new building official or if we have somebody new on staff that they're not just kind of winging it, looking at it and saying, oh, well, we don't really know about this. We wanted to have something in our ordinance that was clear. So we worked with my department, we worked with the inspections department and we worked through the building trades board and we came up with this idea on when we would require engineer drawings for freestanding signs. And we looked at it based on height and fall zone. So the other thing we were looking at was how do we fare with some of our existing freestanding support signs that we have out there? Would we really make them go through that process again if somebody wanted to put a new sign in, if they're using an existing sign structure? And so we looked at that and came with some conclusions and we'll get to that here shortly. The second part of this is our roof sign definition. If you would read how it reads now, it's not very clear. And so once again, we're trying to provide some clarity while providing some flexibility for some of those structures in our building that might, are in our city that might have multiple roof lines. So that, that's really kind of where we came at. We had a variance for a property off of 30th and they had one part of the building that had a parapet, so they had a different roof line and then they had another part of the building that had a lower roof line. And our code said you can't have a roof sign in that, that district. And so we were looking at that. And so that's where we really, we had this kind of question. And so planning commission held a study session on January 14th and held a public hearing on February 25th and did recommend approval of this with a vote of six to zero. So I'll kind of get into first, the freestanding sign submittal requirements. So you'll see on the left there, I'm sorry, the right there, you'll see two signs. You'll see the IHOP, which is right there by the Walmart, and then you see the Family Video on 30th there. The IHOP sign is about six feet tall. The Family Video is 25 feet, so you'll kind of see the importance of that here shortly. So what we said is all signs greater than 17 feet in height, we're going to require engineered stamped plans. Doesn't matter where it's located, any sign greater than 17 feet, we're going to require that. Kind of in that middle area, signs four to 17 feet, we would require what we call a perpendicular fall zone that's equal to the vertical height of the sign. So you look at the way that the sign is facing, if it falls this way or falls this way, we want to ensure that it is not going to fall into the pedestrian or motoring a public space, so public streets, alleys or sidewalks. Signs that do have a fall zone within that area, we would require them to have engineered plans. And then anything that's four feet or under, we wouldn't require any additional documentation. It's a rather small sign, it's probably not going to cause much issues if it falls over. So we, 17 feet's kind of an interesting number, you might kind of wonder where we got from that. We initially had said 15 feet and worked with the building trades commission, had some conversations. We brought in Luminous Neon and Tom from Luminous Neon. And he had basically said, yeah, between about 15 and 20 feet is really that level of where we need to be looking at engineering signs. They, they're, they're large enough, they have enough of a wind load that we probably should ensure that they're getting engineered. The board basically looked at that and said, well, let's split the difference and do 17 feet. So that's why there's kind of that odd number in there.
Would you be uncomfortable with 20?
Um, you know, probably not. I mean, really where the 15 feet comes in is how signs are created. There's a certain amount of the pole that's typically under the ground and so when you have that, that one pole is about 15 feet. Anything above that, you really have to usually add on an additional, an additional support. So, you know, 15, 20, I don't know if it really necessarily matters.
Mayor, I'm glad you brought that up because I certainly support that and I'm an advocate of that too. And I think the folks at Luminous made a, I think, a reasonable request.
Yep.
The Board of Trades considered it between the 15 and the 20. So I would be one that would certainly support amending this to a 20-foot allowance rather than a 17-foot allowance.
I would too.
Yeah, I mean, I think 17 is kind of a sort of silly number, arbitrary number, yeah.
Yeah, right.
So I would be supportive of that and I think, I think the building official is fine with 15 or 20. We just want to make sure really those large signs are the ones that we're ensuring are getting engineered. So, so that's, that's the freestanding. So the roof sign definition.
Can we go back to this here?
Absolutely.
Is it apparent that, or inevitable, that the engineering drawings are going to be a requirement? Because I know when Mr. Sellers was here, there was some confusion, I think with even the departments from the city manager's office to the inspection department and what other cities were doing in terms of the absolute requirement that, that the engineering drawings would be included in the amended ordinance.
And, and I think that's the reason why we want to have this actually codified in ordinance, so that it's clear, so that it comes down all the way from the city manager, all the way that if somebody at my staff gets a phone call, we pull it out of the sign ordinance. And that's actually the reason why we put it in the zoning ordinance, because signs, they first come to, come to my department and then they go over to the building department, the inspections department. So we didn't want to put it in the building code. We want to make sure it's, it's really clear for everybody. So we don't have that, because that is exactly true. When we were doing research, we had our building official, who he was calling his building official colleagues around the state, and they're like, oh, absolutely, we require engineer drawings for, you know, these type of signs, but if you call the planning department, you may get a very different answer. Or if you call the city manager's office, you may get a very different answer.
Right.
And that's why we want to make sure it's actually codified in ordinance, so that everybody across the board, there's a fair expectation from everybody, from Luminous Neon to some of our smaller sign companies, that everybody is going to have the same expectation.
How does Luminous Neon feel about that? About the required engineering drawings?
I think they were supporting.
They were part of the development of the policy.
Yeah, and, and, and they spoke at the public hearing and really the thing they raised was the 20 feet.
The 20 feet, okay.
And they wanted to ensure that everybody is held to the same standard, from Luminous, who's obviously our largest sign contractor in the community, all the way down to some of our smaller sign companies. We wanted to make sure that it's fair for everybody and everybody has that same expectation.
And Ryan, I might just ask, I'm certainly in favor of the 20 feet, but I know that there are smaller companies who haven't been operating that way. When we have a change in ordinance, how is that communicated?
So all sign installers in the city have to be licensed. And so we have a record of all sign installers and so we'll send a letter to them and just let them know that here are the changes, here's what is expected from here on out if you're submitting freestanding signs within the City of Hutchinson.
Okay, great.
And it, does it affect any past signs that have been?
No. No, it would only be for any, any new signs going forward.
So beware where you walk.
Yeah.
And, and to be fair, we haven't had a huge issue with this, but we, we certainly don't want to have an issue with it. The closest sign that, that fell down was the Autozone there on, I believe it was Loraine there. And that was not due to lack of engineering, that was due to the sign wasn't really installed properly. It had two small bolts. So that would have probably not been dealt with with this, but we want to get ahead of this, you know, in case there is an issue in the future, so.
I certainly like that it's not being left at the discretion of one person. There's always, you know, perception of favoritism.
Absolutely, that's what we're trying to get rid of. We're trying to make this a predictable process for everybody. They know that, okay, if I want to submit a sign in the City of Hutchinson, over the height of 20 feet is what it sounds like the council's wanting to go towards, that they will have to have engineered sign drawings. So it creates that clear and fair expectation.
Yeah.
So.
Consistency is key.
Absolutely. Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So moving forward, so the next part of this is roof sign definition. You see the, the first, the, the top is our current roof sign definition. So if you can understand what that means, you're, you're doing better than, you're doing better than I am. And that, that's where, you know, we've kind of sort of have an interpretation, but I really, the idea is we want to kind of get away from, once again, sort of these gray areas as much as we can. And so the proposed sign, the proposed ordinance down below is, is looked at from some cities around the country as well as some cities here in Kansas. And really what we're looking at is it's a roof sign, so there's, there's a couple of ways that a roof sign becomes a roof sign. So the first is that the sign has to be mounted on a roof. So that would mean that the support of it is actually on the roof itself. The second part of it is that a sign that is wholly or partially above the highest point of a roof line, parapet or fascia of a building. So if you have a building with a roof line here and a building with a roof line here, you can have a sign that might project above this roof line, as long as it doesn't project above the highest roof line. And the reason for that is to kind of cut down on visual clutter and that, that type of an idea. So, so that is what we're looking at. So it's two ways. If that sign is mounted on a roof, we absolutely, there needs to be some additional look at it because the, the supports and everything, it just has to be engineered in a completely different way than a wall sign. Or it's a sign that is wholly or partially projects above the highest point of the building. So you have multiple roof lines, that helps with that. So that is what, just to kind of change on roof sign definitions, we're not changing where they're allowed. They're allowed still basically in our downtown zoning district and I believe one other, I believe maybe RC four zoning district. But other than that, that, that would have meant that that variance out on 30th for the, the liquor store there, where the sign barely projects above the roof line, they wouldn't have had to go through that variance process. We would be able to approve that in-house. So that is the proposed definition, changed definition for roof sign.
Is that a pretty, is that proposed language pretty standard?
It's pretty standard outside of Kansas. That, that first one is really what you see mostly in Kansas and, and I think that's because most of the cities around the state kind of borrow their sign codes from each other. But I believe it will, I believe it's Mission that talks a little bit more about the projecting above the, the highest point of the roof line. And then you do see that in other parts of the country. I have a, a professional reference I use when I'm starting any zoning ordinance definition and it's the Planner's Dictionary and it's from the American Planning Association and they collect definitions from all around the country and so it helps you kind of think through the different issues. So that's kind of a mix of that, I believe it's the city out in Arizona and then Mission, Kansas as well, so.
Thank you.
So threw a lot at you here, but bottom line is that a motion to, staff is recommending approval of this amendment to the ordinance.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this ordinance?
Sure.
Since you're here, Cindy.
First, I'll apologize, I've got a dry throat and I'm scared to death to cough. Be taken down. Cindy Prohet, Luminous Neon, 1429 West Fourth. In general, we're, we're opposed to, to more regulation. We think, think it will have a more negative impact on, on business, especially small business. I think we can probably live with, with the concession that's being made to go up to 20 feet. You know, we're, we're very appreciative of your concern and Ryan's attention to the fact that this needs to be consistent and not, not be applied differently as opposed to who's coming in and requesting a, a building permit or a sign permit. So I, I think we can live with the 20 feet. 17 was a really arbitrary number and so it does increase the cost that will be going to the customer and it will also increase the time that it will take them to get the sign. But, and, and I guess initially we were opposed because we don't think that there's really any, anything that's warranted causing this to come to light. We haven't seen any signs that have had failure and so, so we weren't sure if we were creating regulation for something that didn't exist. But we, we can and will live with, with it and appreciate your, your raising it to at least a 20 feet and, and mostly being consistent. Are there any questions for me?
Yeah, I got one question. On the roof signs, who, on a roof sign, how, who inspects? On the roof signs, who, on a roof sign, how did, who, who inspects that, that it's anchored right and all that stuff? I know, does our inspection department tell them how to anchor it and stuff like that?
Yeah, and I was gonna say, in most communities, a roof sign, a true roof sign would require engineered drawings.
Anything else?
Questions from the council?
Thank you, Cindy.
I just wanted one clarification. So the four to twenty feet, I think that's what we're settling on. And then would it be anything, so to the twenty feet and then what, twenty feet and whatever would be?
Yep, so four to nineteen point nine nine.
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, no, I was thinking the twenty and then twenty point nine and up? Like, would the twenty feet be in?
I would recommend that we do twenty as probably that breakpoint of where you do require it because really, at that point, you're getting signs either twenty or twenty-five feet. So.
Well, yeah, that's because I was thinking of the standardization. Normally, you would have like a fifteen-foot sign, a twenty-foot sign, twenty-five-foot sign. So maybe if we went up to twenty feet, does it only include then the twenty-five-foot sign?
I, I think, I think probably from what the Building Trades Commission and what the, you know, the building official and myself, I think we would, we would probably rather see signs twenty feet and above actually required to be engineered. Because that's, those are pretty substantial signs. Those are going to be getting quite a bit of wind load. They're pretty expensive signs too. And so at that point, you know, that, that couple of hundred dollars is, is not, you're not feeling it as much as if you were doing maybe a ten or fifteen-foot sign where that overall cost of the sign might be a little bit, quite a bit more, or quite a bit less.
So can we go back to the, the seventeen? Okay, so signs four feet to twenty feet in height require perpendicular fall zone equal to the vertical height of the sign. See, the way I'm reading that would be that the twenty feet would only be required if it falls within the vertical height of the sign, which I'm actually okay with that. Anybody else want to talk about the clarification there?
Well, we would just substitute twenty feet for the seventeen feet in, in those two instances. That would properly amend the, the ordinance.
I guess, I guess the question is, is, is the intent of the ordinance, do you want for signs that are twenty feet tall to be required to have engineered drawings at all times or only in the time?
That they go above twenty feet.
Says over, over here in, in the draft here, it says over seventeen feet, so over twenty feet.
Yeah, so that's the way, I'm, I'm okay with that.
And, and the reason why we put the seventeen in was because it encompassed that twenty foot as well. Because I believe the belief is that, in, in talking to, to Tom Sellers from, from Luminous, he was at the, the meeting, he said, you know, really in that fifteen to twenty-foot range, you probably should be thinking about getting them engineered. So I think our concern, we would say probably twenty feet and above.
Twenty feet and above.
Are going to require your engineered drawings.
Can we have the lady from Luminous come back up so I can ask the same question to her? Sorry.
Very well may have a very different opinion.
Well, you're right. I would, I would preferably go with just substituting the twenty, which then it would read over twenty feet tall. So the twenty would not necessarily need one if it didn't, if it had a fall zone, it wouldn't need the additional engineering. And so, yeah, if you just literally substituted twenty into the seventeen, you would actually need an engineered stamped drawing starting at twenty-one.
That's what I was thinking. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. But that's what I'm comfortable with.
And I mean, that would be our preference, but, you know, as I said, we're technically opposed to the whole thing.
Yeah, sorry. What are your standard, well, I brought you up here, is what are your standardized? Do you have standardized signs or is it?
I don't think there's a real standardized. I mean, I, I think seventeen is probably an odd, odd amount. And so I don't know that there's a standardized as far as just saying, you know, poles normally come in a certain height, therefore that's what we're going to go with. I think just design-wise, people do often hit, you know, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five.
Yeah.
That's not to say that they can't be adjusted. And that's not to say that people wouldn't start shaving off, you know, a couple inches just to come under that. And I mean, and that, that could be a very real thing. So I don't know that it really changes it, because I think you might see people shaving it, literally an inch, just to come under it.
I mean, in reality, a ninety, hundred thousand dollar sign, which we just had go in, it's a two-hundred fifty, five-hundred dollar design. And so, I mean, it's not a huge cost and talking to one of the individuals that put a sign up, but, so, either way.
For, for financial institutions, healthcare entities, this isn't going to be a real cost that they're going to, to balk at. It's going to be a small business owner who, who's kind of scrapped together that money and wants to get a sign up and then finds out there's now an additional cost and a wait time. And so that's, that's where I think we get the most pushback. But, but yeah, I, I kind of, I would prefer at least just substituting in the twenty so that reads over twenty feet in height.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? And if there's a motion on this, you will probably want to amend it as you read it.
Yeah, in, in the information that was provided to us highlighted in section twenty-seven D, Structure and Engineering Standards, it references in Article One, all permit applications for freestanding signs over seventeen feet. I would, would suggest that we amend that to over twenty feet. And then the second paragraph there, permit applications for freestanding signs of four to twenty feet in height shall include perpendicular fall zone, et cetera, et cetera. So if I could add that, those two items amendments to the motion, I would then move to approve ordinance as amended, section twenty-seven dash eight oh two and twenty-seven dash eight thirteen D of chapter twenty-seven of the Code of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Is there a second on that?
Second. Please call the roll.
Dave Land?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Horace DeCarvallo?
Yes, next item, please.
Item eight E, consider ordinance amending the comprehensive plan land use map.
All right. Once again, Ryan Veelock, Director of Planning and Development. The next two items kind of go together, so we'll kind of mesh the presentation together. But this is a request to amend the comprehensive plan land use map for the property located at zero East Avenue B, also known as the fire station right over here, from Public Institutional to Central Business District. So the applicant is the City of Hutchinson and the property owner is still currently the City of Hutchinson as well. So this is the subject property. City Hall would be located just to the southeast of this property. And then you've got the Avenue A Park that's located directly across Walnut Memorial Hall to the north. And then that one hundred block of Main Street directly to the west there. So the current zoning for the property is public institutional and it is surrounded on the west and the south by C five, which is our downtown zoning district. Comprehensive plan mimics the same. You've got the CBD, the Central Business District, for the areas to the west and the south, and then Public Institutional for the north and the east of the property. So here are just some photographs. We'll kind of go through these quickly, so everybody kind of knows exactly what we're talking about. There's the park across the street. There is the backside of Anchor Inn and those businesses there. The office supply company in Printier to the south. And then there's City Hall. So Development Review Committee reviewed this back in November of twenty nineteen. No comments were made. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this in November nineteenth of twenty nineteen. No comments were provided from the public. And the Planning Commission recommended approval of this change of the comprehensive plan with a vote of eight to zero. Just kind of a reason why we sort of delayed on this. This was initially started when we were going out for bids for the property and we were trying to get the zoning, kind of zoning and comprehensive plan into an area or into a, a district that so somebody could use the building. And then once that kind of went away, we paused it. But now that we have another user, we're bringing it back forward, so. The things that we look at for a comprehensive plan amendment, we want to ensure that development proposal meets the spirit and intent of the comprehensive plan, that the development proposal promotes the health, safety morals, order, convenience, property, and general welfare of the community. The development proposal represents a wise and efficient use of public funds. And Planning Commission did find all of those. And staff is recommending approval of this comprehensive plan land use map amendment from Public Institutional to Central Business District.
Questions, comments?
Is the reason we doing this is because the, the new person has taken over? Is that why?
Well, originally, as Ryan was saying earlier, we were, we were doing it when we put it out for a public bid, just to have it ready for that. We didn't get anything, but, so it's really tied to that and this new, new project. Yes, you're right.
And, and also state law requires that if we do a zoning amendment, it has to conform with our, our comprehensive plan. So you have to do the comprehensive plan amendment before you can do a zoning amendment.
I see.
Hence the order.
Okay, is there an ordinance on the comp plan? Or a motion on the ordinance for the comp plan?
Motion to approve ordinance providing for the adoption of an amendment to the comprehensive plan land use map appearing at section M one seven B of the two thousand seventeen, twenty thirty-seven, comprehensive plan for Hutchinson, Kansas, at the East Avenue B Old Firehouse Building, to authorize the mayor to sign.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Dave Land?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Horace DeCarvallo?
Yes. Is there a motion on the ordinance?
Motion to approve ordinance amending the zoning map referred to in section twenty-seven four oh two of chapter twenty-seven of the Code of, of ordinances of the City of Hutchinson as adopted by ordinance number seven five one eight and repealing certain parts of the original zoning map as designed in section twenty-seven four oh two of the East Avenue B Old Firehouse and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Dave Land?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Horace DeCarvallo?
Yes, next item, please.
Item nine A, consider development agreement with Superior Boiler LLC.
Yes, Mayor Council, a bit of really good news in light of the craziness that's going on in our world today. But before you today is a job creation development agreement between the City of Hutchinson and Superior Holdings, Inc. You know, Chamber, the city, county, we've been working with Doug Wright and Superior for really almost a couple of years now on this potential expansion project. And the expansion project involves the moving of product lines from one of their subsidiary facilities in Richmond, Virginia, to the location here in Hutch. And so Superior, as said in your, your memo, was successful in negotiating the purchase of the old mega building, if you will, out on Cory Boulevard. And that was a building that was originally purchased by the Public Restroom Company. Obviously, that company didn't come. And so it became available and Superior was successful in negotiating that purchase. Currently, that building is being leased to Siemens for their warehousing needs. And, and Siemens will remain a tenant in that building until February of two thousand and twenty, twenty-one. At, at that time, then Superior will begin, you know, the transition of the Richmond operation here to Hutchinson. So as you'll note in your memo, the, the project, Superior's estimating the creation of fifty-two new net jobs here to Hutchinson over a four-year period. Year one, they expect twenty-six jobs, followed by twenty-six additional jobs in years two through, through four. And the majority of those jobs, as we understand it, will be above the twenty-one dollars per hour, which is the highest tier of our job creation matrix that we have. And, and based on these job numbers, our grant to Superior for this relocation is seventy-eight thousand dollars. Plus, there'll be a potential, a, a bonus of fifteen thousand three hundred if they do complete the, or meet the fifty job plus requirements. We anticipate that they will. So, you know, as I noted earlier, these jobs are going to be created over a four-year period. And these incentives will be paid out of our Economic Opportunity Fund that we created three or four years ago. And we've got adequate funds to account for these. And, and, and these payment of these jobs are as they're earned. And so the, basically, our payment would follow a report from the company that they've had four consecutive months of these wages per our, per our policy. And so with that, I'm just excited to ask you or recommend that you approve this, this job. In San Yves, the county will be doing a like agreement. I think they've done a letter of intent and followed by an agreement. And so with us today is, from the chambers, Deborah Tuftal. And then from Superior, we've got, and I'm going to kill your name, Moctar?
Moctar.
Moctar. And I think the council may have a couple of questions if you're available. And he's, Moctar is the Vice President of Engineering and want to welcome you to City Council.
Yes. Good morning. John summed it up really well. I'm Deborah Tuftal with the Hutch Chamber, representing our Greater Hutch Economic Development Partnership that we have with the city. And it's always a good day when we can bring a company with us that's going to make a great announcement and bring jobs to the community. So I thank Moctar for joining me up here at the podium today. Moctar Matala, he is the Vice President of Engineering for Superior Boiler. And Doug Wright would have been here, but Doug is actually going to be in Richmond making the announcement and working with his team there on what this transition over the next year will mean for them. But as John said, we've been working with Superior Boiler, as we do all of our existing companies, on looking at opportunities of how to grow jobs here. And in fact, when we learned that Public Restroom Company was going to list their building for sale on the market, having to make an adjustment in their business plan and, and not create jobs in Hutchinson, one of the first calls we made was to Doug because we knew that they needed additional space and we knew there was an opportunity to bring this work here. So it took a few months of, of all of the details of that working out. But the result of it is great news for Hutchinson and, and it's probably sad news today for Richmond, Virginia. But, but I think this is going to help streamline their operations greatly. And as Doug has started sharing that news quietly with his leadership team in Richmond, he's gotten some early indication that some of their management team there probably will make the move sooner than later because they want to get their kids established in schools here. So we could start seeing some of them move even as early as this summer, which is also great news for our economy in a time that everyone is really suffering. So it's, it's great that we have this bright spot. I'll just turn it over to Moctar and he can talk a little bit from an operations perspective on what this means for Superior.
Yes, this is a new product for us. We already manufacture certain type of boilers. We're going to bring in another product. Along with that, we are developing new products at Superior Boilers. So we give us a complete company that can offer all the boiler room equipment from baking steam to hot water, to water treatment. That's the, and the, the jobs are going to be from welders, pipe fitters, electrical, to including engineers.
Very good.
That's fantastic.
That is great.
It's the best news we've had all week. Thank you for bringing it.
I'm very excited to hear that you guys are bringing that here.
I know, Deborah, you work really hard on, on just what you said, growing our own and supporting businesses that are here. And, and to see such a respected and longstanding business choose to invest here in Hutchinson when they could have invested anywhere else is very encouraging. So I, I hope this is, you know, indication of, you know, more to come.
Well, I couldn't say it any better. So thank you to Mayor and Council for supporting projects like this that help us support job growth right here with existing companies in Reno County. So thank you for your support on this project.
Thank you.
Just a question, if I might. I suspect Superior had other options that they could have considered locating in other locales other than Hutchinson. Do you, or Deborah, do you have any thoughts as to in terms of what the deciding factors may have been to selected Hutchinson for this expansion and a relocation?
The main reasons for Hutchinson is the core management for Superior is in Hutchinson, okay? Either in the operations or the engineering side is located in Hutchinson. And also being centrally located, it actually works out better for us when it comes to shipping to different locations within the US or North America. That's the best advantage we have with Hutchinson.
Great.
As we unwind the beginning of this project a little bit, I will tell you that initially, this project came to us through a code name that, that we couldn't even tell at first that it was one of our local companies because as most companies do when they're trying to to make good business decisions, they want to make sure they're finding the right building, the right location with the right mix of advantages from operating costs that they can. And so they did look at, one, whether to leave this in Virginia, two, whether to bring this to somewhere in the Midwest, maybe Kansas, but they also looked at Oklahoma, Missouri. They were, they actually were looking for an existing building two years ago that we didn't have on the market at that point. We showed the bill, this building before it sold to Public Restroom Company, we showed it, Bob Brown came out and showed it to Doug Wright at that point, which is just a lesson learned that you better jump while, while you have the opportunity because Public Restroom jumped on the opportunity to buy the Corey Road facility first. And then Doug said, man, I wish I'd have jumped sooner. But he was still in the evaluation stage at that point. And so this wasn't really ours forgiven conclusion that it was going to, to come here. We had to compete for it, just like we always do. But thankfully, a building emerged and we got them to sign on the dotted line for it and, and we're all the better for it. So just one of those examples that companies have a lot of choices they can make and we've got to do everything we can to grab every job that we can.
Appreciate it.
Great question. Thank you, John.
Congratulations.
Yes, thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Moctar.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I would move to approve the development agreement between the city of Hutchinson and Superior Boiler LLC and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Solder? Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Hi, Mr. Carvallo.
Yes. And Linda, we're going to take just a short break and we'll reconvene at twenty till. Is that sufficient? Or maybe a few minutes?
No, it's fine.
Okay.[714.73]
Facility, we are basically taking over all of it except for some shared areas with police records and dispatch. And the lease primarily is to protect our investment in the facility since we don't own it. So it has an initial 20-year term with five-year renewal periods. Our police department has been there for many, many years, almost 50 years. And so this is not new. It is being remodeled. You'll see in the proposed lease, we've always had a cost-sharing arrangement with Reno County, always. We've never paid any lease payments, any rent payments. It's a cost-sharing arrangement, and you'll see more of that in the contract that's there. Some of those numbers have been adjusted. They've always been percentages like that, and I know that's kind of confusing. And the county, before they approved this agreement, actually took some of the numbers. The county commission demanded that some of those numbers be factored on out so you can see one figure at the end. But our folks that are involved haven't had any difficulty in determining the amounts that we are to pay. Some of the capital expenses have been defined, so when there are future expenses, future needs of the facility, about how those are to be shared, whose responsibility, there are basically $5,000 and up for capital expenses. There will be continued communication with the county and the city between their maintenance director and our police chief, so that when there are future developments that we're aware of those, there were some issues in the past with, you know, some parking lots and things when those were done recently, and the city didn't get an opportunity to join in that. So there'll be communication to take care of that. Other capital expenses, it's basically by what portion of the building is being approved as to who pays for it. And primarily, just about everything in the law enforcement center from the restrooms on down is ours. It's ours. Talks about splitting of maintenance expenses. We do that currently, continues in the same manner. I've already talked about the percentages for our insurance coverage and the terms. Beyond the initial 20-year term, we have five-year renewal periods. That will protect our investment. I mean, 20 years for our initial investment, we're covered. And there really isn't anyone else who wants that space other than us. And we're kind of in, I think we're still in the design stage. No?
We're getting ready to go to bed.
All right. We're out of the design stage.
Finally.
Well, good. But this will help with that process, and so counsel, the final step is for you to approve the lease agreement.
I'm sure there are several questions. I know I had several for John, so would you like to go ahead?
I know this is a very, very, very unusual arrangement that we've had in this community, in this county, in this city for years and years and years. But I do want to spend a couple of minutes and kind of underscore everything in terms of fairness, to make sure that we, as an elected body and our administrators and so on, understand and are comfortable with the fairness of it. If I could refer to Article number four on capital expenditures, I'd ask our city attorney for some clarification of some of the language. Where it talks about, under A, capital expenses are defined as follows: any repair, replacement, upgrade, or renovation of facilities. You talk about the $5,000. Then under capital expenses include window and roof repair and replacement HVAC systems. I understand all of that. But my question is, is that on item B, capital expenses shall be allocated to the parties as follows. This is where I need a clarification on. And it goes through the splitting of the expenses and so on down to an all-other inclusive item number five. All other capital expenses will be paid 68% by the city and 32% by the county of the total cost. I guess my question, as it relates to fairness, is the roof itself, which is a permanent part of the building itself, as to whether or not you interpret that, that we would be obligated if the roof were to be replaced, that we would be obligated to pay 68% of that, and the county only 32%? In my judgment, that does not appear to be fair. Perhaps you can respond to that.
Well, that is correct, and that's how much of the facility we occupy.
Square footage.
But we don't own it, is what John's implying.
Exactly.
Right, we pay to lease it. So normally, when you lease something, like...
Well, but we don't pay.
We don't pay to lease it.
Oh, we don't?
We don't pay to lease it. Are no lease payments, just like before. We're really just cost-sharing again. The only thing we're doing is protecting our investment with the renovation. We're not paying anything.
But is the 68%, although I understand we occupy that, in a building that we do not own, is that fair? In my judgment, I would think there could be some negotiation on that point there, on the roof. There may be other things, HVAC and so on, but particularly the roof, which that's a permanent part of the structure.
We don't pay nothing right now, like you said, on leasing, right?
Yeah, right.
So if something does go to the roof, and we have to pay for the roof, and that's what we're giving back, we don't pay nothing now.
Well, I think we are investing $2 million.
$2 million in the renovation.
I see.
And... Yeah. I mean, and yeah, I mean, that's a legit question, but if I'm on the other side, I'm saying, well, you guys occupy 68% of the building now. Before, we didn't. Now, we, the sheriff's out, up top, they're out below, it's all city facility. And so that's really, and we spent a lot of time talking about the capital improvement side.
I know, it's a tough situation. It is.
And, you know, one time, it was going to be, well, we'll address that when the time comes, and governing bodies and city and county managers can figure it out. And then we say, you know, that's probably not the best long-term policy. But, you know, we made the choice.
I know.
As opposed to going off-site, building the facility to...
Do we know the condition of the existing roof today?
I think that, yeah.
And since we're going to be having the majority, the 60, I'm assuming there was discussion of whether we took up ownership of the building and then leased them the 32%. Was that ever negotiated?
We really talked about, the only thing in that regard is...
Since we have the majority anyways.
About us renting, you know, they be the tenant, we'll be the landlord, tell us how much our rent is. Well, we never got to that point, but that would have been a substantial amount of money that we would be paying rent, just like you would out in the, you know, commercial property. And, you know, a lot of these percentages are really based on historic sharing of utilities and all of that. But as far as the roof, I mean...
Jeff Hooper, Chief of Police, and that roof was replaced within the last 10 years. I'm not exactly sure of the date, it was before I got here, but it's been replaced within the last 10 years. Will it survive the length of our 20-year contract? I don't suspect that it will, in talking to Harland. So at some point in our contract, that roof will probably have to be replaced, if we stay for the 20 years. You know, and when we're talking about, this is one of the things we discussed with the building itself, and I think that's why we put in the capital improvements piece, what happens if we put in $2.5 million into the building and the roof does go bad, or the foundation cracks, or something of that nature. And so this puts in a percentage of safeguards for us to protect our investment into their building.
And I will say, John, you might want to give a little bit of background, if you don't mind, about why we chose to do the investment in this building versus buying new, and how that looks toward, to the community that we're working together.
Right. You know, and this goes back several years, but that was one of the thoughts. Well, let's go offside and build a brand-new LEC somewhere that's just the police department. And, you know, 30th Street, or all these ideas that would have been $10 million, $12 million, $15 million versus, and leave the LEC vacant, which we already know what's happened over at that courthouse. And so we've got all this facility, nobody there. And it was a whole idea of working intergovernmentally with other agencies, and we've had a good relationship over the years now. We're a little disappointed in how the building's been taken care of, and we've expressed that. And it's been pointed out, you don't pay rent. Okay. And we even talked about, you know, as I said earlier, that, well, let's just pay rent. You'd be our tenant, and, you know, coming up with a number there, and that would have been a huge number for us annually on the rent side. And so our choice at that time, and the council was involved in all that, was to continue our working relationship with the county, stay in that facility, you know, the sheriff's moved out. We're making the best of it. If you asked Chief today, would he rather go build a new LEC somewhere, modern, you 'd probably say yes, but is that feasible? And we talked about that.
My question was, if we purchased and owned the building and leased the 32%, was that an option discussed? I'm not talking about...
We didn't discuss that, but...
Well, also, it has to do with the history of the building. When you look at these percentages, and we talk about the utilities, that's because many of them come through the courthouse to the other building. So you don't really have the means of separating. They're not separate buildings. And that's the history of it. And it's been difficult on the project also because of all those shared. And that's why you see the percentages of these utilities as they are, and there's a certain amount of history, and also understand what the police department does. Having that access right next to the courthouse, well, they have to go testify in court hearings. The court hearings are there.
Yeah. I'm not arguing that it shouldn't be in the same place.
Yeah.
I just know I've seen duplexes that have had separate owners.
And we've been advised by our architect and the electricians that came in and all the experts, because of the way the building is set up, we can't separate utilities. You have to have one utility coming in. That's for fire safety. I'm sure the fire code, Chief Beer were here, because they want, if you have to shut off power to the building, there's one location to do that.
Okay.
So those utilities and everything cannot be separated. It's effectively one building that we're occupying.
Okay, that was my question.
We did talk about it, but we never really got beyond that.
Okay.
Well, I know history is history, and there was, we don't need to revisit that, but I noticed there is some language in there that provides that you, Chief, will annually meet and confer with the building maintenance supervisor at the county to evaluate the building itself. Is that sufficient safeguards in your judgment to make sure that we don't repeat what's happened the last 40 or 50 years?
Right.
That the building has deteriorated to the point we're having to put $2.5 million in renovating it and bring it up to today's standards?
Yeah, and I think Mr. Dierdoff kind of pointed out, we have been disappointed in the care and upkeep and maintenance of that building. And if we're going to put $2.5 million into it, we expect some level of maintenance coming from them. We've had those conversations with the county, and, you know, even from our janitorial services, which have not been, in my opinion, up to par. And so we've had those conversations. I don't anticipate it's going to be a once-a-year conversation. I suspect we'll meet more frequently than that. What kind of led a little bit to that, I think Paul kind of alluded to that, was the county redid all their parking lots, and they didn't do the parking lot for the LEC, which is in dire need of resurfacing. And we're like, why weren't we included in that? It's your building. That's what kind of facilitated a lot of this, and the county's perspective is, that's our parking lot. And so as those capital improvement projects come up, we need to have those conversations because we could have jumped in and a cost share with them to improve that parking lot. Now we're stuck with being the only parking lot around that facility that's in dire need of, and it'll cost us more money at this point, probably, to resurface that parking lot. And so those are the type of capital improvement projects that come up, whether it's us wanting to improve our side of the building, or the county doing an improvement for the facility, you know, completely, we need to be involved in those conversations if we're going to share cost, so.
Are we gonna, I know the county does maintenance on that building. They going to keep the maintenance, or are people going to come and maintenance the building? Do you know?
Currently, the way it's set up, they'll keep the maintenance. And the janitorial services. Now, that's been an interesting point when we're trying to re-renovate the building and stuff. We're happy to use their crews and their maintenance personnel because they know the building best. Even putting in our new HVAC, putting in new boilers and things like that, it has to mesh with what the rest of the building uses. So we're going to have a brand-new system that's going to facilitate our side of the building, but it has to tie into their old system that facilitates their side of the building. So it's been a complicated project.
I do know, being an electrician for the city of Hutch at one time, you're on the generator backup system there, and you can't separate the electrical because you won't have no backup for your dispatchers or no for. So there ain't no way you can separate that. You have a big old generator over there that, when it goes on within seconds, it comes on and powers up your system. So there's no way we can separate the electrical. I do know that much.
Yeah.
I mean, ultimately, I think the community wants to see more of this, you know, cities and counties working together to try to get costs down because it's all coming out of the same taxpayer pocket, whether the city is loving it or the county. But I share your frustrations, John, and I, when I originally read that, I thought, well, that's a pretty plum deal. But I didn't, I'm not taking into account the lack of rent, so that's valid. Did the county already approve this last week?
Yes.
They've already signed it.
It's fine.
And I think it's important to talk about square footage, and that's the key here, is are we paying for the space we occupy, and are they are? And that's really what this is all based on. If we said, well, let's do 50/50, because that's what we always do, why would I do 50/50 if you guys are in 68% of the space? And so it really boils down to square footage, unfortunately. I don't know how else you would, I mean, if I were on the other side, I probably wouldn't think that was a good deal, 50/50.
And there's still shared functions within that facility, even after it's renovated, between the city and the county. So is it completely separate in any respect?
No.
No?
I'm disappointed to hear about the parking lot situation, and whatever we can do to avoid that, and that's silly. That shouldn't have happened.
And I hope the biggest disappointment to come is today, because when we bring bids back...
That's my next question.
I'm telling you, our design team's been on this for way too long. And, you know, we had estimates back then, and when you do a reno like this, it concerns me. And there's a lot of unknowns, and so, you know, let's save the biggest surprise for probably when we open the bids, so.
Yeah, and they have warned us about that, because it is a building. We don't know what we're going to get when we get into the walls and we tear up that structure. And, you know, I know it was originally slated for 2.2, 2.3 range, and their early estimates are it's probably going to be closer to three.
And part of that, they've been designing this thing for a year and a half.
I know.
So a little bit of that's there, frustration, but, yeah.
This is our 43rd Street Bridge.
Yes, could be.
Yeah, that's a good analogy.
Hopefully not, but you'll have an opportunity to bet that when we, you know, get that out.
Well, our police department certainly deserves it. It's overdue. We're certainly not questioning that.
No, no.
We've got to do what's right by our officers. It's just been, you know, not as seamless as we would have liked.
I mean, if the council wants us to go back, I think that's a tough thing.
I don't think it would be productive, to be honest.
John, what are your thoughts?
Again, I go back to the fairness, and it's been tough, it's a tough project, and I'd like to negotiate further, but it's inevitable that probably we're not going to make any progress on it, so I'm ready to move forward on it.
I mean, we all know, John, life is not always fair. So, you know.
Are there further questions or discussion from the councils? Anyone in the audience? Is there a motion on this item?
I will move to approve the lease agreement with Reno County, Kansas, for the use of the law enforcement center and authorize the mayor to sign.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Solner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Tyra Sticker-Bollum?
Yes, next item, please.
Item 9C, consider acceptance of KDOT Aviation grant.
Your patience is admirable.
I'm well-used to it. Good morning, council. My name is Peter Miller. I'm the airport manager, and I'm in front of you today with some pretty good news. To kind of give you a little bit of background here, back in 2017, KDOT Aviation out of Topeka funded a statewide airport pavement study. They, different crews, different engineering crews visited every airport in the state, and they looked at every square foot of every piece of pavement on every airport in the state, and developed a statewide airport pavement maintenance plan, and distributed that to all the different airports. And so, as you guys can probably imagine, the airports are really kind of only as good as their pavements are. That's pretty much how everything runs out there. So the, let me see if I can go to the next page here. So looking at our average pavements, our average pavement condition index at the Hutchinson Airport was 68% back in 2017. We got the report in 2018. So that's pretty much in line with the state average. Since then, we've done a couple other smaller pavement projects, and those numbers are probably up a little bit closer to 70, 72%. But that still means that there's portions of the airport that need to be addressed. We do have some pavements out there that are beginning to fail and ravelling up, and you don't want rocks and sand and gravel getting sucked up into airplane engines and propellers. That gets rather expensive. So back in August of last year, I applied for a KDOT Aviation grant for a crack seal, seal coat, and remarking project for the area that I've kind of got highlighted here in the red, a little bit harder to see. Basically, it's all of the aprons that serve all of the hangars, including our base tenants, hangers 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, Wells Aircraft. It's also the, pretty much the primary route that aircraft get to from and to the different runways for takeoff and landing. So as you can see, there's lots of different colors on there. The pavement varies everywhere from poor to very poor to serious. Lots of cracking, lots of unraveling. So this is kind of a little bit better picture of the areas that we put together the project for. So I worked with the city engineering department, and we went out and surveyed everything and figured out exactly what needed to be done, and they helped us generate the costs for the project. So when I put the grant request in, in October of last year, we had some pretty tight numbers that we told KDOT, this is what we'd like to do. So I've got one more slide here, kind of showing kind of some of the individual areas. These are, the areas in red will be the full-depth replacement. We have to cut that out and actually just re-put pavement back in. The rest of the project will be a scrub seal. They basically come in and, well, crack seal and then scrub seal over the top, and then my staff and I will do all the runway markings and taxiway markings ourselves. We can do that in-house. So in February, first week of February, I got notified that our grant was actually approved, and they sent the paperwork to me. And the total project cost, as planned by our engineering department, was about $293,000. KDOT Aviation will pay for 90% of that, up to $263,700, with a city share of $29,300 to get the work done. So a little bit of background on that. There's nothing in the 2020 budget for that because this project was taking place late in the, it was past the budget process last year. So in the 2021 CIP budget requests that we'll be working on here in the next couple of months, there will be a request in there for that $29,300 for the airport, for us to move forward with that project in the spring of next year. Once we accept the grant, that grant money is there for up to three years, so we've got three years to finish that project. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Peter, you've done a great job over the past many years, or several years since you've been there, in terms of leveraging monies and taking advantage of federal and state grants, and just keep Hutchinson's name in front of KDOT and the FAA and so on.
I do try to do that.
I know you do, and so we really appreciate your efforts in keeping us in the forefront of those grants.
You're welcome.
Are there other questions, comments, or a motion on this item?
I would move to accept Kansas Department of Transportation grant offer AV 2021-32 in the amount of $263,700 for the pavement maintenance and preservation project associated with aprons, taxiways, and taxi lanes at the Hutchinson Regional Airport, and authorize the mayor to sign.
I second that.
Okay, please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Solner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Tyra Sticker-Bollum?
Yes, next item, please.
Item 9D, consider employment agreement for city manager.
Counsel, I just want to stop and thank you for your efforts on selecting a new city manager. I didn't do the work here, you did. Tom Sanders did the work here, and I just want to thank all of you for that. You spent a lot of time, a lot of effort, and appreciate what you have done. I just finished up a contract, and that's all that's left right here. And you have it before you. It is Jeff Cantrell, and we have, well, my, quit fighting me. We have included all the terms of his employment, very similar to prior contract with John's contract, outlining his duties. He begins May 15, 2020, includes the same benefits for other management-level employees, and the terms associated with that. I don't know that I'm going to read those off for you. I know you've already seen them, and you know far more about this than I do because you've had to talk about it for so long. So the last thing left to do here is to approve the contract here so that Mr. Cantrell comes May 15.
Okay, great. Thank you, Paul. There are questions on the contract?
No.
Do you get ready to be done reading?
Yes.
Well, I certainly wanted to give my thanks to Tom Sanders, HR, our search firm, SGR, and the community panel, Deborah Tufole and Aubrey Patterson as well, who helped tour the candidates, and everyone really involved with this process, not least of all the council who put in hours and hours and hours of work during the discussion and search process. So this is exciting that we made it this far. And I would entertain a motion on this contract.
I will move to approve the employment agreement with Jeff Cantrell for the position of Hutchinson City Manager and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second, please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Solner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Tyra Sticker-Bollum?
Yes, next item, please.
Consider city manager extension agreement.
And counsel, you requested that we try to hang on to our current city manager just a little bit longer to cover that gap between now and the time that Mr. Cantrell assumes his duties, and John has agreed to do that, to remain here until May 8, and under the same terms of his existing contract, and we are to provide family health insurance coverage through December 31, 2020. And we figured out how to do that, by the way, so it is not an issue. And so the only thing that I submitted to you was just an addendum that changed those two things and those two things alone. Okay? So that's all I have on that.
Comments or questions about the extension? I'd like to thank John for his willingness to do that. Been working on some pretty critical projects that we could really use his leadership on. So John, I know that cuts into your golf plans, but I really, really appreciate it. It's really great of you to do that.
I was on this, this is for aviation people, I was on the glide path to land, and had the radio of the tire and say, I'm going to pull up. Circle for another 40 days.
You're circling for, well, thank you for doing that.
No, no problem. Appreciate it very much.
Yeah. Is there a motion?
I would move to approve the addendum to city contract number 2020C3, employment agreement of John Dierdoff and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Okay, please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Solner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Tyra Sticker-Bollum?
Yes, next item, please.
Item 10, report of city officials.
Okay, let's start with you, Nancy.
Nothing, just...
Just wash your hands?
Yeah, just wash your hands, social distance, you know, whatever.
Okay, what about you, Dave Line?
I've spoken enough this morning.
Okay. Garza?
Yes, this last past week, I got with the school on my junior council thing, and I have, the teacher's going to kill me. I met with her a couple hours. I will give her name when it's appropriate. She is a high school government teacher. She's excited about it, and we're getting together. Also, our human resource director's involved in this. She met with me, we met with them, and we're going to make up the, Mr. Brown, have they talked to you about anything yet?
I've actually spoken with Jada.
Yeah, she talked to you. Okay. Okay, so Mr. Brown will be a little bit involved, and I appreciate him helping us out. So you'll see here coming up, we'll be bringing it to you. Everybody's excited about it. The kids are excited about it. So we'll bring the outline to you and everything, and the teacher was excited, that's the main thing. So I'll bring more to you about it. It looks like I'll go. So we'll bring more to you about it.
Okay, thanks for your work on that. Okay, Sarah, what do you got?
I don't really have anything. I've enjoyed the last week of not having to do so much.
Yeah, we're not going to know what to do. Three-week break between meetings.
No, just want to thank everybody. We had long discussions. We had lots of meetings, lots of work that went involved with HR and everybody to get the city manager hired. So I just wanted to just give an extra thanks for everybody's dedication to that whole process. I know it was a real big, big decision on everybody's part here, and I wanted to thank everyone. And now we get a nice little break.
It was a marathon, but I think we've made the right decision. I just had a few comments. I wanted to take a minute to recognize our city employees. Many of our lives have shifted dramatically in the last week as we're asked to stay home to ensure our safety. But as a city, we're really a service organization, and those city employees are operating as usual to ensure that needed services run smoothly for the city. We don't have a lot of what you would call non-essential staff. So thank you to the first responders, our sanitation workers, public works, and other departments for doing what you do and helping provide a little bit of normalcy during these times. John is going to touch on some of the policies here in a minute we're putting into place to help protect our staff and doing our part to keep the community safe. Also, the suspension of utility cutoffs to help alleviate some hardship that people might be encountering with this whole issue. I also want to thank the medical community for their prepared efforts and their preparedness efforts and their willingness to work on the front lines of the virus. Our business community has really stepped up as well. A lot of these people don't get to stay home, and definitely the retail workers who help ensure that we have groceries and other needed items for our time at home. So thank you to them. This requires a lot of sacrifices from everyone. But the sacrifices of staying at home pretty much pale in comparison to those made from the people I've just mentioned. Lastly, I wanted to encourage everyone, if you can, to follow the Facebook pages of the city and the county. The situation is evolving rapidly, and we need to make sure that we're listening to the sources of information that are, have the most up-to-date information. So that would be Reno County, Kansas on Facebook is the name of that page, and City of Hutchinson-Government for the city. The city is hosting a virtual town hall today at three o'clock in conjunction with Hutchinson Regional Medical Center. So really want to thank the hospital for their efforts to put on this event. It will be at three o'clock here. The public will not be invited, of course, but we do invite you to watch on our city channel or on our Facebook page. Again, that's City of Hutchinson-Government. And we'll ask, or we'll have a panel of medical professionals that will be answering questions about COVID-19. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to John.
Yeah, Mayor Counsel, you've got a copy of a press release, and we're just, it's already out, basically talking about our reaction. And we're going to follow suit with many other public entities and organizations. And so effective today at five o'clock, we'll be closing several facilities to the public. City Hall, Parks and Rec's office, Public Works, Hut Zoo, Cary Park Golf Course, Clubhouse, Home Builder Shelter, Rice Park, all the community buildings that we've had rentals, they'll be canceled. We'll refund all that. Memorial Hall, Sports Arena, Hutch Animal Shelter. And basically, you know, while we're closing those facilities to the public, we're still open. And so we'll have people in, working, particularly here in City Hall. It's very, you know, it's very difficult because of utility billing. And so we're going to really work through that process, and we'll have signage up. And hopefully, people will be able to adjust to making payment, dropping it in our box. We'll be checking the box very regularly. So this is very fluid, and a lot of things are changing. I don't know how long this is going to be, but we'll continue that for this for probably at least fifteen days is probably the general, what people are talking about. And so people are going to have to adjust. And, you know, the good thing about our operation is you can do all that online. But not everybody has the capability of doing that, and so we'll be accommodating those individuals the best we can. As Jay, Mayor, mentioned, particularly on the utility side, there will be no shut-offs. We'll be in communication with those individuals, letting them know where they're at. But we will not be shutting any utilities off, so. The other thing, today we'll have some communication with all of our employees, you know, talking about a little bit, just background about the virus. We'll be talking about the ability to work remotely. We'll be talking about, you know, leave administration. We'll be talking about flex scheduling. You know, really, we want to create a safe workforce for our employees. But as we know, as public servants, public employees, we don't close. And so we've got a lot of men and women out on the streets working. We'll continue to work through this and don't have the ability to stay home and work remotely. And so we'll continue to communicate that the best we can. So be happy to address any questions. I know there's going to be a lot going forward, and we're going to have to adjust as we go with some of these business interruptions that we're going to see with just utility billing and building inspection and what have you, so. So we'll keep you updated the best we can. And as Mayor mentioned, City of Hutch Facebook, we'll have all those updates on that as well as other social media that we can do, so.
Okay, well, John, thanks for all your efforts in getting prepared for this and supporting the staff and the community as best you can.
It's crazy, it's crazy times. I mean, it's just, you know, we're all going to look back on this one day, and we remember when, you know, remember when Y2K, some of us remember that.
Yeah, I remember Y2K.
Yeah, then we remember, you know, the events of 9/11, and now we got this, and so. But I think the country overall, people are reacting, and this whole social distancing thing, it can only help. And so I think we've got to play our part in that as well. And I think going forward for city council meetings, at least early into April, we'll probably limit, I saw where Wichita's doing that, limit council action to emergent, I mean, really pressing matters. And so we're maybe not have proclamations and all those things that generally bring people in, so.
Okay, yeah, great.
Need to pay the bills?
All right.
That's all I had.
So there's five Tuesdays in March, but we don't meet on the fifth Tuesdays?
We don't, right, yeah.
I got a question for the police chief real quick on this. Our police officers and our fire, they all come close vicinity with the public. Are they wearing gloves or masks, or you haven't got to that part yet?
Well, we've gotten to that part. We're a little bit different than the fire department. I don't want to speak for Chief Beer. At the police department, we've implemented a four-tier safety plan or response plan for our community. We're in tier one right now. Tier one basically means that we have limited some of our contact with the public. One of our biggest and most vulnerable places is our communications center, because we do 911 communications for the entire county. We serve thirty-eight different agencies. And so we've isolated our dispatchers. We've isolated our communications center, self-isolated, obviously, and we've created different egress points for our police officers and our dispatchers, so that the guys and gals that are working on the street don't come in contact with our dispatchers. We've also prepped and spun up, prepped for spin-up our backup site. So if our communications center would get contaminated, we could immediately transition to our backup site, clean the current site and transition back and forth. So we have those capabilities. Our officers on the street, like I said, we're in that tier-one stage now, where we're still answering calls for service. We're encouraging the public to call in, and we'll take as many of those calls over the phone as we can. We've shut off the, we normally would bring citizens back into our police department to take reports and stuff, and we've cut that off so they no longer have access inside the law enforcement agency. If they come up to our front counter, we'll handle with them through the glass and take reports and things that way. So we've limited access. You know, in law enforcement, we have to respond to calls. And those calls include the public. If we get to tier two, if we feel the need for tier two, then that means that we will no longer respond to property crimes, past crimes, and things like that. All those crimes will be taken over the phone. So if somebody calls in and wants to report a crime, we'll give them a telephone number, or we'll get their phone number, and an officer will call them, and we'll take those reports over the phone. There won't be any contact that way. So we'd only respond to crimes in progress calls. If we get, and we get to tier three and tier four, we're going to respond to less. But at every stage, we will respond to all civic unrest or public safety incidents, and we'll just kind of scale back some of our other responses and try to handle as much over the phone as possible.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
All right, so a motion to adjourn.
I motionally adjourn.
I second. Please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Yes.